It's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome to Neighborhood Board Meeting 12. First up on the agenda, we have the Honolulu Fire Department. Do we have a representative from the Fire Department here? Not seeing one. They did send in a monthly report that is on our Google Share Drive. So next up, we have the Honolulu Police Department District One. Lieutenant Segusio, I see, is online. So Lieutenant.
Good evening, everyone and Chair and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Segusio representing the Honolulu Police Department District One, Community Responsibility. Apologize for being out of uniform today, but I'm at Moanalua High School because my daughter just made National Honor Society and she's being inducted. But thank you guys for your time and patience. The information provided today represents all the stats for your particular area in regards to District One. For more statistical information, you guys can go to the HPD public website, www.honolulupd.org. And getting right into the stats today, motor vehicle thefts for the month of April was four. From the previous month was six burglaries were zero, which is great. And previous was one. Thefts were five. Previous to that was six. U M Vs or car break-ins were three. And previous to that was also three assaults were zero. Previous month was two sex assaults were zero for both months. Graffiti cases were one. Previous month was zero. Drug offense arrests were one. Previous to that was zero. Total calls for your area in regards to District One was 617. Previous to that, it was 602. So there were no robberies for your area reported in April. I looked into the recent car break-ins in the District One area of responsibility, and there were four. The locations of these car break-ins are listed. It's gonna be Stevenson Middle School is one Pacific Heights Road, Telephone Pole Road off of Tanless and Moleca Trail on Round Top Road. So three of those were shattered windows, so we wanna make sure that our community members don't put anything visible in their vehicle that these might want. And that there were no criminal breaches in regards to District One's area responsibility. The safety tip awareness for the month of May is in regards to these spoofing scams. These spoofing scams are somewhat disturbing due to the hook being used by these criminals. We're all involving law enforcement. The callers were saying that they were with either law enforcement or with the state judiciary, saying that they have some outstanding warrant for their arrest or for missing jury duty. These criminals are using phone number spoofing apps that can change the numbers and their where they're calling from. On the caller ID would be show like City and County or State Divisions phone numbers. The callers sound very official, but law enforcement would never call anyone in regards to an outstanding warrant for a for payment or in that regard. Another giveaway is the amounts that they're asking for. It's in the range of $4,000 or less. Payment requests usually through gift cards, money transfers, Venmo, or some sort of payment app. In some cases, these victims were also recently retired. The above mentioned commonalities were the general consensus being reported. HPD encourages our community members to be very vigilant, to be skeptical of these calls in regards to outstanding warrants. And if they are asking for payment via gift card or money transfer, most victims are embarrassed. They don't wanna report. However, I'm imploring our community members to report the crime to authorities so that we can better track these spoofing scams. At this time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? And it's a little tougher for me to see. So if I miss someone, please, you can speak up. Do I have any questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a question from the community, Mr. Gary, if it's okay. Please.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I have a question regarding the bike-only lanes. My question is, what is exactly not allowed in there? I understand things like motorcycles and schoolers, but what about those powered schoolers, powered surfboards? Not surfboards, skateboards, et cetera like that. I've seen also mobile wheelchairs in in bike lanes. So a simple question, if you can answer, thank you.
Yeah, very good, very good question, Gary. So in regards to those green colored bike lanes, this is still part of the roadways lanes for traffic, yeah. So the only things that should be in there are bicycles, right? So bicycles, pedal assisted bicycles, but obviously there's those people with the scooters. They call them and the others that surfboard looking thing is called a one-wheel, huge and you know, and they kinda traverse it or those motorized skateboards. They should not be in there, but just but just think of it as, you know, sometimes there are situations where, you know, they get on there. Is it better for them to be on that surface street or on the sidewalk where there's pedestrians? Yeah. So there's some discretion that officers use. We don't usually cite for those types of violations unless they're actual motor vehicles like mopeds or motorcycles or motor scooters, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there are there any questions from anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much, Lieutenant, and on behalf of the board, tell your daughter, well, job well done. We're proud of her. Thank you.
Thank you. I will. Appreciate you guys.
Aloha. So next up, we have District Five. I.
Hello.
Lieutenant King, or Sergeant King, excuse me.
Yes, good evening. Sorry, I'm filling in for our lieutenant tonight. They're doing a training exercise with the rail. So they're all tasked over there. Um, just some statistics for District Five. On the side of Beach five, seven, one, seven, two, and seven, three, the poly area all the way up to Lona Kila and up to the tunnels. Burglaries in April, we had one compared to March. We also had one motor vehicle thefts. We dropped down to four from previously five. For thefts, we went up to six versus five from March. For U E M Vs or unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, we went down to 10 from previously 14. Robberies went up by one. However, with that robbery case, it happened at New Wano 711. The complainant decided to withdraw the case and therefore that case was actually closed. He didn't wanna press charges. Um, and in March, there were zero robberies. For aggravated assaults, we had zero in April compared to one in March. For sex assaults and rapes, we had zero compared to two in March. For simple assaults, we had two in April compared to three in March. Total calls for service for your area in District Five, in April, we had 859 versus March, we're at 902. That's it. Any questions from anybody?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Sergeant King from the board? Any from the community? Not in a questioning mood. Thank you very much, Sergeant King, for coming out. We appreciate aloha. Okay, moving on. Next up, we have Neighborhood Security Watch with Paula. Paula, are you able to get online? I see she must have stepped away. Paula? Okay. We can circle.
Send a written report.
Okay, I didn't see that. If it's a written report, hopefully it's in our shared drive, so everybody can review that. Oh, there, there's Paula. Paula, are you ready to give your Neighborhood Security Watch report? It says you're muted, but kind of in a strange way. We're not really sure what's going on. Paula? Okay, well, she did send a written report apparently, so I hope everyone can have a chance to review that. If you get it working, Paula, we can circle back. But for right now, let's move on to Border Water Supply, and I saw Jimmy on there.
Before you move on.
Yes.
I can't, I can't seem to raise my hand, but Paula's report was more of announcement about a meeting that we might wanna read because she's saying that there's a meeting that's gonna be held on June 10th with the Neighborhood Watch that is combining with Y and I and Makiki. I'm trying to open it, but it was New Wano Neighborhood Security Watch has been training and working with Makiki. We will now start to train and work with Y and I on June 10th, 6:00 PM at Y and I Assembly of God. There will have a presentation. All are invited. So in case everybody doesn't see that, the meeting is 6:30 to 8:30 Monday, June 10th.
Thank you, Adrian. Thank you. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were there any other questions? I mean, Paula can't answer, but does anyone wanna bring up anything else about Neighborhood Security Watch while we're on this topic? Hearing none, we can move on then. Jimmy, Border Water Supply? Are you ready for your report?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Everyone, I'll be doing my report online today. I just wanted to start my report from questions from last month. The first question concerned, you want a dam number four and it poses any risk to the community? And the question was also, what is the BWS doing to keep residents safe should something happen to the dam? People were informed that the BWS recently cleaned the reservoir. So I would like to report that the border water supply ensures that dam number four is safe and currently poses no risk to the community. The greatest risk to the community should the dam break is flooding. Please note that the BWS and the state of Hawaii regularly monitors, inspects, and maintains the dam to mitigate and correct any problems before they become a concern. The BWS also has an emergency action plan that identifies and evaluates potential dangers and initiates corrective actions. This includes the following. Pumping water out of the dam to prevent water from overtopping the dam. Evacuation plans and working closely with the Honolulu Police Department and the city's Department of Emergency Management to implement any necessary protective actions. And our next question concerning Border Water Supplies Water System Improvement Project several years ago on Pacific Heights Drive. While the contractor was paving the road, it rained and sediment and asphalt entered the storm drain and dried. And since then, the drains have not taken on stormwater and many homes below the street have flooded. The area of concern is near 2441 Pacific Heights Drive. And I would like to report that the border water supply was not aware of any sediment and asphalt entering the storm drains near 2441 Pacific Heights Drive when the final paving occurred. We recommend and we recommend that the board reach out to the city's Department of Facility Maintenance, which oversees the city's storm drains to address this concern. And our last question from last month is concerning a border water contractor that installed a new hydrant fronting 2404 Paola Road. The resident at that address talked with the construction crew and was informed that hydrants must be spaced every 250 to 300 feet as required by law. However, the resident noticed other streets in the area where hydrants are only spaced 80 feet from each other and wanted to know why. So their concern was that aren't the hydrants too close? And I want to report that fire hydrant spacing for single-family residential neighborhoods is required by law to be 350 feet. However, a section of Kapalua, Kapalua Place across some lie street is too narrow to accommodate new hydrants. And to provide adequate fire protection for those residents, a new fire hydrant was installed fronting 2404 Paola Road, placing it near two existing hydrants. And another hydrant was also needed at 372 Kapalua Place, which is about 330 feet from the closest hydrant. So that's the questions for last month, and I'll move on now to my monthly report. There was only one main break last month that happened on April 4th. That was a six inches diameter cast iron pipe at 2404 Paola Road. And installed here was 1927, so most 100 years old. For my general water announcements, I just wanted to talk about Protect Oahu Water. Please visit www.bordewatersupply.com/protectoahuwater to learn the latest about the Border Water Supplies Operational Actions in response to the Red Hill Crisis. This includes weekly pumpage charts, recent drinking and monitoring well test results, BWS news and updates on Red Hill, water conservation tips and rebates, and Oahu's water history. And finally, just want to report that Border Water doesn't have any updates concerning the Water System Improvements Project on Dalseth and Alika, but we'll keep the board updated next month. So that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Just for clarification, did you say that pipe was from 1927 on Paola Road? Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. So first off, I saw Audrey's hands. Audrey, please go ahead.
Thank you. Jimmy, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, so you said no report for April, but and then the project that's supposed to start in April for the Dalseth area has not started. Is that correct?
Oh. This is a different project than, oh, sorry, no, sorry. It has not started yet. Yeah, we're waiting on S H P D approval.
So the the materials arrive already?
Yes, the the pipe material arrived April 8th this year.
Okay, and then the notice to proceed was already given. So now you're waiting for what? A shiptee report? Or what are you waiting for?
Yeah, that's correct. We're waiting on the shiptee approval.
Okay, so since then, Mr. Jimmy, on May 11th, there was a water main break on Alika. And then on May 20th, there was a water main break on Dalseth Avenue. I know you only gave the report for April, but my concern is, and the concern with all the neighbors around me, there's so many breakage. I mean, this is constant. It's humbug. It's just inconvenient, blah, 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 blah.
Sorry, Audrey. Which date did the Dalseth main break happen in May?
Dalseth was May 20th.
May 20th, okay.
And Alika was May 11th.
Okay. Yeah, I do understand your frustrations. I'll see what Border Water is doing with these these main breaks. Report back to you.
What do you mean? You're gonna see what they're doing with the breaks? They're breaking, Jimmy. Okay, no comment then, Jimmy. Okay, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I assume that that Jimmy will follow up and provide us some report next month. Sylvia. Oh, no worries, Audrey. Thank you. Sylvia, please go ahead.
Okay, Jimmy, um, let me get that clarification about the fire hydrant on Paola Road and lie on that corner, and it's directly across from Kapalua Way. And that street is a narrow, it's a U. It's actually starts at Paola School and it makes a turn and comes back out by lie street. That place. So, and I can understand why that resident questioned that fire hydrant because the fire hydrant is right by his house, but on the other end of his property, the is another fire hydrant. And that's why he was questioning it. But I drove through Kapalua Way by Paola School and I was able to, and I noticed there's a fire hydrant right at the driveway of, well, the inside driveway of Paola Elementary School just before it makes the turn into a U. And then I started to go further, but the road was blocked because it looks as though construction work was being done and the and you guys were, were you guys building and putting another fire hydrant in there?
Let me follow up with our construction section, see what what project was going on. I'm sorry, which which school did you say that this project was happening or which which street?
On Kapalua Place. And I think that's why there was a confusion because I could see if you guys were putting that fire hydrant because the fire truck would be able to link up to that new one that just made on the corner of lie and Paola Road. And the holes could go straight into that lane on that corner of the U. But they seem to be construction in there also, so I don't, I can't understand where all these fire hydrants all of a sudden are coming in and they're very close up, you know, together.
Well, might I suggest, Jimmy, if maybe you just kind of maybe research where the new fire hydrants, all the new fire hydrants in that particular area are. And maybe once you pinpoint them, we can kind of ascertain why there are so many in one location or go from there. Is that all right?
I'm, I'm not complaining. I mean, you can have as many fire hydrants you want in my district as long as it saves the house.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is that it? So?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from anybody for the representatives from Border Water Supply? Hearing none. Thank you, Jimmy. We appreciate your time and coming out this evening. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Next up, we have the filling of vacancies. We have two vacancies in our Sub District One, which is the area around Punch Bowl. Do, and if anybody is interested in serving, they may volunteer at this time. If you're uncertain whether you live in that district, we can find out pretty quickly. It's mostly around Punch Bowl. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to serve? Hearing none, we can move on. Next up, we have our Oahu Metro Planning Organization Report with Ray G.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, great, great. Good evening. Um, the last meeting that I went to, I asked them whether our board became official members of the Oahu MPO and they said they didn't receive, I guess, Patrick's letter. So just asking Patrick, were you able to send them a letter requesting membership? I know we talked about this long ago, but we needed to fulfill the four meetings, which I attended four meetings consecutively. And we're trying to get our board as a member onto it so that we can vote, you know, we can be represented on the Oahu MPO.
Well, I did, since it's a board action, I did actually put that on the on the agenda. And so if, yeah, once the board, which I assume will happen, but it is an official action just to have the board sign off. So yes, I wrote it already. I just, I didn't bring it with me.
Okay, well, we could talk about it.
We're gonna cover it.
Okay, great. So just to report for this last meeting, um, they, I guess, the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization presented planning projects this time. Last month, they presented the long-term plan, I'm sorry, the short-term plan, the statewide transportation improvement plan. And I had asked the board members that they were soliciting comments and if you wanted to solicit anything about any of the projects. There were not really any projects for our area. They did have some rockfall mitigation, a rockfall mitigation project on Poly Highway, but it wasn't the section that all I had requested. But anyway, I guess they closed the comment period, and this time they're talking about planning studies. So it's a budgetary tool for everyone, the state, the city, and some nonprofit member agencies, whoever are part of the Oahu MPO, can request federal funds to submit projects on this plan. And it can be about short-term studies, long-term studies. Um, my last life with the city was as was the public parking planner with the Department of Transportation. So our parking master plan for the City and County of Honolulu was federally funded, like $200,000. And it was over a period of five sections. So just to give an example, that's the type of studies that they have in this document. But when I looked at it at the meeting, they didn't really have any project specific, any projects in our specific area. It was more just general studies, like it's a budgetary tool for funding for the Oahu pedestrian master plan and, you know, work where you live kind of studies. And complete streets, of course, was one of the projects and the general plan and all that kind of stuff. So there's nothing much to report, but what I did wanna tell you was that if you're interested in looking at these documents, they are online at oahumpo.org. And I can put the address in our chat area in case any of you are interested. And for now, I guess that's all I'm gonna be reporting. I'm sorry, there's nothing in our area, but I'll keep an eye out for our board and and keep you updated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Are there any questions for Ray from the board? Are there any questions from anybody? Thank you, Ray, for your great reporting on that. We appreciate keeping track. Next up, we, thank you. Next up, we have the Papakalea Community Updates, and typically Adrian gives those. So Adrian, do you have anything to report this month?
Well, we just, once again, wanted to congratulate and report that Principal Neil Evans was acknowledged for elementary school was principal was recognized as 2024 National Association of Elementary School Principals Hawaii State Distinguished Principal. And he received an award on Sunday, April 28th. Roosevelt High School's graduation is tomorrow evening. And Lincoln's May Day came off without a hitch in spite of the storm. They had it on Friday. It stopped raining just for that to happen in midst of the storm. So the community, popular community was out for that. So that's it.
Thank you. We're gonna have more about Principal Eric Cockey in just a moment, but that's fine. Are there any questions from anybody for Adrian regard? I'm sorry, Adrian, were was that it or am I cutting you off?
That, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, um, so Sylvia, I see you have a question. Please go ahead.
Can I add something to what Adrian said in her report because she was talking about Papakalea? I wanna announce that two members of the Papakalea Senior Graduating Class for this year received scholarship awards from the Roosevelt High School Scholarship Fund. We had, um, one person's name is Givenson Haru, and he lives on Ani Aniku. He received the $2,000 scholarship from Roosevelt's Red and Gold Committee. And then, um, $1,000 went to Olin Kaahui, um, whose family, who has family that lives in Papakalea area too. So I'm really happy that two people from Papakalea received scholarships.
Thank you for sharing it, Sylvia.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that's always, it's always nice to hear good news from the community. So thank you. Is there anything further?
One more thing. Stevenson Middle School is taking three students to Florida next week for the Geography B. The first time that they're taking students from the school to the National Geography B. And so Papakalea is helping to sponsor one of the students for the B. I think that's it for all the things we know that's going on with the schools. Thank you.
Excellent. Kaapuni, did you wanna add something? Saw your hand for a moment. Oh, oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Adrian.
Other shows, Harlem.
Oh, is that Kaapuni? That's someone different. Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your report. Moving on, next up, we have residents and community concerns. Are there any concerns from the community anyone would like to express? I will bring up one just really quickly. I guess I could have added this to the agenda, but I didn't because I just. because I just wanted, um, the board to think about it and that is uh, perhaps after the, um, elections for new officers, uh, coming up in July, the board can consider request, uh, a request to alter the plan to allow us to fill vacancies from other sub districts. And I know there's a lot of thoughts in, on the board about that because each, each sub district has their own character and their own maybe needs. But that's just something to think about. We can bring it up in the future, but we don't need to talk about it at the moment. But I just wanted to plant that in everybody's mind as a possibility. So that, that's it. Are there any, um, Adrian, I see your hand up. Did you wanna comment?
Yeah, well, another co- a concern that I have and I don't know how it will be, uh, how to address it was the letter from councilman, um, what is it? Deltsam, yeah, Tyler, about the parks that will, that they're looking at to become, uh, what is it? For dogs, leash dogs? I'm quite concerned that Booth Park is on that list. You know, a lot of families, a lot of children go to Booth Park. And I just don't see why you would, they would consider or having Booth Park be added to a place where people can walk dogs. When you have, it's the only park with a pool, it has the baseball field and all of that. And a lot of people that have dogs don't actually pick up behind dogs. And you have so many children playing at that park. It just seems to be, if that can be stopped, I would like to see that, that stopped, that Booth Park should not become a park that is approved to be a park for dogs, leash dogs. Yeah, we have until Au- August 24th to, to come in or whatever, but that was in, uh, one of the letters that we just recently received and that's a community concern for me.
Thank you. Well, uh, we really need to put that on the agenda, so I will put that on our June agenda and we can discuss that. I didn't realize, I, I, I hate to say that I didn't see, I didn't notice Booth Park on there if it is, but, um, I will put that on the agenda and then we can have a discussion and if the board decides to take action, we can do it at that time. Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you.
Sylvia.
Oh, I was gonna add to what Adrian had said about, because this, um, is something that came from Tyler's, um, office and listing all the, um, parks in our neighborhood area. And I was wait, I think what I'll do is wait until Tyler's staff gives his report and we can ask what the rationale is about this letter that came out.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds like an appropriate action is to wait. Thank, thank you. So hearing, uh, no further public, uh, residents' concerns, let's move on to our next agenda item and that is uh, our elected official reports. And first off, we have, uh, Director Kim Hashiro for, um, the mayor as a mayor's representative. Director? Uh, Director, are you?
Hi, sorry, I was having trouble getting my video to show up, but, um, as long as you're able to hear me.
Yeah, we hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, wanted to start with the mayor's highlights from his monthly newsletter. So an update includes major improvements at the Department of Planning and Permitting. Uh, there's also information on the city's annual sustainability report, which was published on Earth Day. And also information on a project or a big project to remove the Haiku stairs, which recently, uh, began, uh, construction to remove the stairs. Uh, also, um, important information on how to protect your families from fires during wildfire awareness month. And as summer fund, uh, programs are, are near, how you can help to land a job and, and help Oahu's keiki. So I will be including a link to the mayor's newsletter, uh, in the chat. Um, also wanted to mention that we are continuing with town hall meetings. And the next one is actually this Thursday at 6:30 PM at the Coco Head District Park Gymnasium. Uh, the two remaining will be held on the next two Thursdays uh, at Haula Elementary and also, uh, Kanoilani Elementary in the YPO Waipahu area. As you know, Memorial Day is coming up and there is a big push requesting, uh, donation of lei. Uh, the city is looking to provide 38,000 lei to adorn graves at the National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific at Punch Bowl. A mayor will be having his Memorial Day service on Monday. And I will be including a link to a flyer providing locations for making lei and donating lei. And as I mentioned earlier, the Department of Parks and Recreation is still looking for staff to help put on their summer fund program. And the jobs start with a minimum $16 per hour rate. And, um, I will be including a link on how to apply also in the chat. So moving on to questions and concerns that came up during the last meeting, uh, we do have responses. So the first was requesting maintenance for trees at 2424 and 2502 Pacific Heights Road. Uh, so this was a concern that, um, these trees could provide, um, potential hazardous conditions. They make loud creaky noises. And on April 19th, uh, the Department of Parks and Recreation Urban Forestry, Forestry Division uh, inspected two banyan trees fronting 2424 and 2502 Pacific Heights Road in Pa'oa. The supervisor determined that although maintenance jurisdiction is unknown, pruning to address the immediate public safety concern was warranted. And specialty pruning tree work was completed on April 24th. The arborist could not determine whether the trees that are growing within the location are within the city's right of way or on private property. A survey request was submitted on April 18th. And once this survey is completed, concerns will be forwarded to the responsible, uh, landowners. So hopefully that brought some relief, um, given that pruning was done in late April. Okay, moving on to the rental car concern at 2610 Henry Street. So this is the multiple, um, complaint that we've gotten, um, at this location. And unfortunately, DPP went out. They conducted an investigation on May 7th and it did not reveal any evidence of car rental businesses being operated at that location. So I did wanna ask, I'm not sure if Member Easely is on tonight, but, um, wondering if, if an inspector did reach out to her. Her number was provided to DPP.
I think she was home. Can you? Yeah. Is that the mom? Jill, are you, uh, are you on this evening? Okay, I Oh, Jill, yes. Jill, are you available?
Hi, I was just, I was just able to log in. How are you?
Great.
Hi, Jill. Did anybody reach out to you from DPP?
Yeah, so I had given my name in case anybody needed to get ahold of us to know what the situation was. The DPP reached out and they said, unfortunately, because they couldn't find anything online about the rental car situation, they can't do anything, even if it's, you know, something that's actively happening. There, there's no way to find that they're illegally renting cars. Um, even though it, it, it's obvious that that's happening. So, um, they said that they could not do anything further at this point and I guess it is what it is.
So did, they, they did confirm though seeing activity, um, that looked like some kind of rental car business?
So actually, they confirmed that there was a rental car business. They confirmed that they were given a violation previously and that they took it offline. And now because there is nothing online, they, um, will not be able to do anything until they find some type of a documentation, even though the cars are still all parked there. And people are getting out and renting and they're cleaning the cars on the road. Um, so that's just the situation, I guess. They said that they were given a previous violation for renting cars there.
Okay. Well, follow up with DPP and find out what exactly that means, because that doesn't make sense to me if they issued a previous violation.
Yes, it doesn't make sense to me either. And I said, but the cars are all there. They're in their driveway pulling the cars in and there's transients that are getting out of the cars. It's been viewed multiple times. It's been seen by a lot of our neighbors as well. Um, but they said because, and, and they kept saying this over and over again, because there is nothing showing online that they're running a rental car business. There's no ads, there's nothing like that, that there really is nothing that they can do. One of the, um, the, one of the neighbors had to ask them to leave. Uh, I guess they had an interaction with, with one of the people that had all of their clothes on the side of the road and they were pulling it out of the car and repacking it into the suitcases.
Okay, so I, I'll follow up with DPP and find out what, what happened. I'm, I'm glad at least you were contacted. Uh, but what was reported doesn't quite make sense to me. So let me, let me go and follow up.
And when, when, when one of the representatives, the first representative from DPP had a lot of information and they were gonna go in and check on it. The second one, uh, representative that called actually did not know that there was a previous violation, um, that the first investigator told me about and that they were, were issued a violation for the exact same thing. I appreciate whatever you can do.
Did you get the names of the people that, that contacted you?
I have the name of the first investigator that contacted me. I was so thrown off by what was told to me by the second investigator. I didn't take the notes down so, in the car and, and, um, listening at the time.
Okay.
So I can send you the information for the first investigator.
Okay, that would be good. And, and was this on or about May 7th? Does that date sound about right to you when you're contacted?
Let me check. The first time I was actually out of town in Oregon.
Okay. If you can let me know.
I'll have, I'll have to look into that. Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to move on to the next question, which was regarding feral chickens and why they can't or aren't being used to keep fire ants under control. So, uh, while this does somewhat apply to our department, customer services, we don't have the technical knowledge regarding feral chickens and controlling fire ants. So, um, I did reach out to the State Department of Agriculture and did receive a response from their Plant Pest Control Branch Manager, who's an entomologist. And this person responded with a, a quick no that chickens would not control, uh, fire ants, partly be, because of their size. Apparently they're 1/16 of an inch. But also, um, what was relayed was that, you know, there, there's just no way or ability to use feral chickens to control fire ants. So wanted to respond on that. And the last inquiry that came in, uh, relates to, um, safety concerns at 2471 Pacific Heights Road. And there was a quest, a request if an evaluation could be done going downhill regarding a speed hum and that there is a tight corner. So DTS, uh, did respond that they are going to evaluate the speeding concern and the re- the speed hum and will provide a response, um, to the board when their investigation is completed. So I'll be providing that response in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and that actually concludes my report. I don't know if there's any other questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? The mayor's? Can you put the participants list on? So Mason, I'm sorry, Mason, we, um, Yeah, go ahead, Mason. You're, we can hear you.
Yeah, I know.
Yes.
Um, can I? Tree trimming issue. We, my neighbor had a letter from the city saying that they are going to trim the trees in the month of April. April came and gone. They're poor at that particular time. You know, can you follow up again on this? Cause our neighbors are real concerned. These trees are and they're growing on to a property across to the park. We have rubbish on the street. We have branches falling on people or cars or whatever, all over the place. We need to figure out what's going on. Um, I see.
Mason, you're breaking up a little bit. Um, can you tell us the street again?
The Milli Street.
I'm sorry, can you? Milli Milli Street. Okay, thank you. You're, yeah, your, your audio is sort of breaking up, sorry. But, uh, Kim, you got that, right?
Yeah, so I wrote down Milli Milli Street, uh, address or some kind of landmark. Okay.
Yeah, it, it's actually a very, it's a short, it, it just runs the length of like a park, so it's a very short street.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mason, but, yeah, you're breaking up. Um, are there any other, uh, questions? Thank you. Are there any other questions or concern from anybody for the mayor's representative? Audrey, did you have something?
Yes.
Please go ahead. Uh, you muted yourself, Audrey.
Sorry. Hi, Kim. I, I'm sorry to bother you. Um, I know Poly Highway is a, a state uh, street or road or whatever you call it. Recently, I don't know who, whether it's the city or the state, put up, um, 30 signs that says 30 miles per hour. But they also left on the signs that says 25 miles per hour. And a certain, either egress or ingress, um, there's some 20 mile per hour signs. So there's, it's confusing for everybody. And so if they're gonna, wherever, whether it's the city or the state, I'm gonna leave on the 30 mile per hour sign, please have them remove the 25 mile per hour sign or vice versa. Um, and I, I hope the council member and, uh, Senator is also listening, their representative. So whoever can take the ball and run with it would appreciate it. Thank you, Kim.
Audrey, do you mean that in the exact same area where they, they put up these new 30 mile per hour signs that there are already other 25 or 20 mile per hour signs in the exact same location? Or does the speed change depending on the, the area?
No, it's, um, I, I live by Wood Street and down, so when I go down, uh, Poly towards town, it's not in the exact same place. That's why it's confusing. But as you travel the road going down towards town and then coming up, going towards Kailua, it's at various stations. So you really, I mean, they, if it's right next to each other, it'd be really confusing. And until you pay attention. So actually, I'm speaking also in behalf of Paula Korshege, who I guess is muted and Pat Tyra, they all noticed it too. So, yeah, we're, we're kinda watching and it's confusing for any driver. So if a police is gonna give a ticket, uh, you know, which one are they gonna hang their hat on? The 30 miles per hour or the 25? It's, it's not a wrestling, but if whoever can get it straightened out between the city and the state would be appreciated.
Okay, so. Okay, so it, yeah, it would be um state DOT, so.
Oh, okay, so.
They control the speeds on Poly Highway.
Okay, well, I knew it wouldn't be HPD. So hopefully the Governor Green's representative is listening and he can take the ball and run with it. But thank you for the information that it is the state that puts up the sign. Thank you, Kim.
Thank, thank you. Are there, is there anything further? Director, I will say um, we are, we're gonna talk about this in a few minutes, probably more than a few. But about DPP and the monster home issue, there's some um serious concerns in the neighborhood regarding the uh the responsibilities of DPP and perhaps failing those. So I I don't know if you can stick around. If you stick around for that discussion, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Moving on. Moving on, we have council member Tyler DeSanto, DeSantos Tams representative. Do we have someone from his office?
Yes, hi Chair Smith. This is Lisa Leonardo, his office manager.
Yes, please go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you. Um, chair members and neighbors in Uanu. I'm gonna um give a couple of announcements and then I'll talk about um some of the questions that we had from previous meetings. So just want to send a reminder to review council members' monthly newsletter for any information on action items um throughout his district. Also, in April, uh, Bill twenty four relating to primary urban center was introduced. And council member is looking to put an amendment for every resident to have access to transit in the primary urban center. Now, I know, I think this was maybe two or three months ago, um, when we were having the issues uh, speaking on the concerns of Route four, I believe that was discontinued in that area. And just want to make sure that when this primary urban center, uh, when we start working on this that we put resolutions in to make sure that everybody gets access to transit. So that'll be coming up in the next couple of months. Um, council member was able to meet with some of the uh tenants of fifteen Craig's Art and that have some um, safety issues along Uanu that our office is going to be working with. So I'll keep you updated on those as we move through that. Um, on May fourteenth, we had a coconut rhinocerous beetle meeting. It was held in Kalihii. Um, but it was open to anybody in our district. Um, and so we had a great presentation and we'll be moving on with that, uh, working with landscapers. Um, educating everyone about that and how to eradicate that. Um, we do have a fire ant meeting at Stevenson School. This is for the Papo Kulea area on July twelfth. And um, I'm sorry, July eleventh, six P M. I'll keep you all updated um as we go along and uh, hopefully we'll get some banners and flyers out there for everyone. Um, and also just an update, uh, in August, we'll be introducing some legislation to address speed limits around the island. And especially those in the school zones to give the uh department's flexibility to reassess speed limits to reduce dangers to pedestrians. Um, now I have some updates on some addresses that were requested um to check up on. Uh, the first one was twenty seven sixty one Pacific Heights. Um, and we received um some information on that. Let me pull that up real quick. So um, on March sixth, the D DPP Building Inspection Section um conducted an investigation and revealed that a May nineteen twenty twenty one uh pool permit was reinstated in February of twenty twenty four. They also found that from dates ranging from December twenty twenty one to present March of twenty twenty four, there were no building code violations found or issued at the time of investigations. Um, they're gonna be continuing to monitor this project. So this request for investigation has has been closed. Um, but we'll monitor this as well as DPP and we'll update as we go along. And then there was a request uh to on one five seven Ragged Hill Place. We did not get any response to our request for investigation. Um, our constituent services director Lynn has reached out to DPP again, uh, I believe it was yesterday. Um, and again, I will monitor that and try to update you. And then last, um we, there was conversation about the letter from council member regarding dog parks. Um, the letter has two lists in there. The first list, which has uh eight different parks. Um, that is the list of what currently has dogs on a leash per permitted. So that would be Aleva, Awailimu, Belihwayana, Kamamalu, Loikalo, Mother Waldron, Napueyo, and Thomas Square. The re- the next one, the list of parks on the next page is just a list of parks that are within our District Six. So council members' district. So those don't currently have. And um not quite sure if council member is on. I think he wanted to make comments, but I wasn't sure if he was on.
Yes, he's on. He is on. Council member, did you uh want to add anything?
Thank you. Um, and and thanks Lisa for the uh, for summarizing it. I think that's an accurate summary. Um, this started with uh some residents in Kakaako. Um, you know, all the condos coming up and everyone has a little dog. Um, wanting clarity as to which parks allow dogs on leashes and which ones don't. As it turns out, as Lisa mentioned, there's only eight parks in or around our district that allow um dogs on leashes. So for all the other parks, and I I see it all the time, right? People walk their dog through the park. They let the dog kind of run around on leash a little bit. Um, but all of that is illegal. And so I thought this was a good opportunity to ask every neighborhood board in my district. Are there parks where people already bring their dogs on leash that people hang out with? You know, all the community members that walk their dogs. Do they all hang out at New Wano Valley District Park? Should that be one where maybe dogs on leashes are allowed? Um, or, you know, do we as a neighborhood not want that? And want it to remain illegal and no dogs permitted in the park whatsoever? Um, I think that these are important conversations for us to have, and I don't think anyone's ever, you know, come to the community to ask. So I thought this was a good opportunity to do so. And that way we can give a list um to the Parks Department that says, you know, all of these parks, the community is interested in in allowing dogs on leashes. Um, given that so many people have dogs, we can do it all at once rather than sort of doing it sporadically.
Thank, thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, does that conclude your report, uh, council member and Lisa?
Um, so I want to bring up one other thing that Lisa mentioned early. I recall um when we were going over the Route four uh shortening. You know, there were concerns that everyone basically above Wiley Street is without transit unless you walk over to Poly Highway and cross the highway. And so as she mentioned, we're going through the primary urban center plan, which is the long range plan for um the urban Honolulu area. And what I'd like to ask um the board to do maybe at the next meeting is consider whether they would support um an amendment that I'm planning to put in that would put in a statement in that plan that the long term goal of the city and county Honolulu is to make sure that everyone in the primary urban center has um easy access to transit. I I don't think that's an unreasonable, you know, statement of policy to make. Uh, clearly, there's gonna be parts of the island where it's impossible to do it, but in town, you know, it's, it should be fairly easy. Um, I think that would go a long way at the next step when we push the department to, you know, really take a hard look at it and we can say, hey, the policy says everyone in urban Honolulu should have access to transit, so let's make that happen. Um, I I think, I think that would help to actually get um some transit service restored rather than, you know, begging and pleading and getting on hands and knees and arguing over how many people are riding on on any particular route.
Sounds great. I'll I'll add that to our agenda for next month. Thank you, council member. Uh, are there any questions from the board? I see Sylvia's hands up. I'm sorry, council member, I'm not uh, was that? I just don't want to cut you off. So Sylvia, please.
Okay, regarding this um second list that you sent about list of all parks within the city council district and six sorted by neighborhood board district parks. When you put together this list, did you take into consideration of, even though that's in your district and you listed on and saying that's possible um, locations where we would allow a dog park, did you take into consideration what the use of those, the current use of those parks are before you listed it?
Uh, to answer your question, that is a list of every park and it's here for your convenience because as you can see, a lot of other districts have a lot of parks and they might forget about one or fixate on one particular park at the expense of another. So in adding that list at the end, we're saying, just for your awareness, um, Neighborhood Board twelve has all of these parks and it's up to, you know, use the community to figure out um, where it might be appropriate or not, since you know the community best. This is simply a list of all the parks within Neighborhood Board twelve.
Yeah, I understand that, but this is my common sense talking, okay? Say in number eleven, you have listed all these parks and one of them is Stevenson Recreation Center. Now, what is Stevenson Recreation Center being used for? Is it appropriate to even consider that being a dog park?
I'm sorry.
And the same thing with Kawanakoa Neighborhood Park. It's a school park. And so if you allow dog park, that to be a dog park, what about the students that use that area for their school as recreation for their P E and whatevers? And that's why I was a little bit concerned when I saw this, this list that came out that we didn't look at the locations of these parks. You just listed it. And, you know, and I'm thinking, oh my God, do I have to fight this now for this park in this area?
Because Sylvia, Sylvia, I think Sylvia, you're you're kind of addressing the merits of the list and that's what we're gonna discuss next month when we put it on the agenda. I think the council member was merely stating that he made a list for our convenience so that we can review those. So yeah, let's, let's take this up on the agenda next month, if that's all right.
Um, this is Lisa. I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, just to add on to that, basically, I think it might be easier than it sounds. You take everything in your, just in your twelve, neighborhood twelve and use the ones that there are only five and you just say yes or no, dog, dog on a leash. I think it's as easy as that.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. So uh, so Sylvia, next month, just, you know, for everybody can think about it and then we can come in and go through the list of all the parks in our neighborhood and make a decision whether we want to advise to change from either it's currently a dog park to not a dog park, that sort of.
I could do it for the whole district.
Okay.
I know exactly what's going on in these parks.
Okay, but we are, we are gonna discuss that next month. Uh, and that would be the appropriate time to bring that up. Thank you. Uh, so next up, Kathy.
Hi, thank you Tyler and Lisa for your report. Lisa, could you just repeat what you said about the twenty seven sixty one Pacific Heights Road DPP inspection and what was, 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 was the permit that was revoked reinstated?
Uh, if I could break in on that, I'm sorry. Um, we do actually have that item on our agenda. Uh, it is specifically the monster home issue. Um, Lisa, I, and Tyler, if if you have time, I would really appreciate it if you could stick around for that. Thank you. Yeah, that that's, that's definitely something I'd like to pursue too. That's all right, Kathy.
Okay, and just one more comment about the dogs in parks. Uh, you, everybody has probably gone to Alamoana Park as we have for many, many walks and daily activities. And even though the city has that big illuminated sign at the entrance, no dogs allowed. Oh my gosh, and I, you know, we've had confrontations with dog owners giving their dogs showers and baths at the showers. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. There's no enforcement. So just, just saying that's our comment. I mean, I love dogs. I, I will, we've always had a dog, but it's really so thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I hope the review is a uh pathway to making better enforcement in the future. Thank you. Thank you very much, council member. Thank you very much, Lisa. We appreciate your time. And yes, if you would stick around, I'd appreciate it. Uh, next up, we have Governor Josh Green's representative. Do we have someone? Oh, William, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks for, um, uh, William, you, Governor Josh Green's representative. Uh, so just want to highlight that earlier this month, on May second, the governor has announced his inaugural climate advisory team. Uh, the newly formed team comprised of experts and stakeholders is dedicated to tackling challenges of climate disasters and providing a comprehensive roadmap for the state's strategy to mitigate future impact climate change. Um, that was one of the items that was highlighted earlier this month in his newsletter. And we wanted to also highlight that there is a range of initiatives uh for lowering household costs for, through energy rebates. This is through the Hawaii Energy Programs and through the State Energy Office. Uh, one of them is a appliance rebate program, which provides up to eight thousand dollars off a Energy Star heat pump, four thousand dollars off the electrical panel, twenty five hundred of electrical wiring, seventeen hun- or one thousand seven hundred fifty of Energy Star heat pump water heaters and a range of other initiatives that to be applied for by households and the general public. I'll put the information into the chat shortly. But overall, that's one of the main things I want to highlight and it's good to say.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions for the governor's representative? I I just have
Oh, actually, sorry, I apologize.
Oh, oh, I I apologize.
I was a miss, I I know, sorry. I heard um, um, former member Hidono mentioned something that might have been raised to me. And she was asking a question to the city at the time and I heard um, it that it could be raised to myself, but I might, I I missed it. Can, can former Hidono reiterate or some, or yourself, Chair?
Certainly. Uh, Audrey, would you like to reiterate your question? Uh, go ahead, Audrey.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, please. Yes.
Okay. Hi, hi, thank you. Um, yeah, so on Poly Highway recently, I guess it's DOT, the state DOT put up uh, new speed limit signs. So both ways uh coming and going from downtown, we they put up a thirty mile per hour sign, but they still left on the twenty five mile per hour signs. And then periodically at some, I guess, cutoffs, there's um twenty mile per hour signs. So there's all different degrees of uh speed limits. So can somebody get that straight? And yeah, would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, former member. I'll raise that to each DOT.
Thank you.
And sorry, Chair, I know you're
Thank you.
in court and had an interview as well.
I I apologize. So are, is your report concluded?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, the, sorry about the confusion. Uh, are there any questions for the governor, governor's representative from anybody in the audience? Hearing none. Uh, I I do wonder, uh, do you know, has the governor made any um announcements regarding whether he's gonna sign Senate bill? I can't believe I forget, but thirty, it's like thirty two, the one about the auxiliary um auxiliary dwelling units and uh do you know what I'm speaking of? Do you have any um thoughts about that? Uh, SB thirty two.
I would not be a, um, speak on his behalf for any bill signings or vetoes or otherwise. But as you may be aware, the, the legislature has passed um bills in, with an assignment early this month and there is a um, a period of time that the governor is um, a period of time that the governor is undergoes bill review and for signature or signature without his, um, or sorry, passage without a signature or veto. But I can't, I'm not as familiar with that legislation, so I can't speak to that.
Well, that's okay. I mean, we're, we're probably, we'll find out well before next month anyway, but thank you very much. So hearing no further questions, thank you very much, William. We appreciate it. Thank you. So next up, it are is district, I mean, uh, District thirteen, our Senator Carl Rhodes, and I see Glenn from Senator's office. So if you'd like to go ahead.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Um, I submitted my report to you folks. I'm just going to stand on that with the exception of just one item I want to touch upon. It's that the uh Hawaiian Humane Society, they reached out to us, wanted to um notify members of the community that they're looking for foster families for their kittens. So they have like over two hundred kittens wasting, awaiting foster placement so that they can grow big enough for spay neuter surgery at about eight weeks of age. So the Hawaiian Humane Society will basically provide all of the training supplies and veterinary care for the foster families. And the foster care period can vary from short term uh to two weeks to several months, depending on the animals. And I have a link there. Um, if you want to find out more information about that. That's it. Any questions for you folks?
Thank you. Are any questions from the board? For the community? Well, we hope to uh see the Senator back soon. Not that we don't appreciate your attendance, uh Glenn, but uh I hope he can come back soon. But thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair. He should be back the following month.
Okay, great, great. Thank you very much. And uh tell the Senator, thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Next up, we have uh Representative uh Jenna Takak, Takanucci. So Jenna?
Hi, everybody. Good to see everybody. Um, just a couple of quick follow ups of that have been on my uh list. Um, first, the children's crossing signs, um, for the, the pedestrian crossing signs um on the street around New Uwana Elementary School, um Paula, uh, we're still following up on that. I haven't gotten a response um yet back from the department. Um, the New Uwana Stream vegetation in the stream near the Puiva Bridge, um maintenance was completed there. Um, so I know a lot of people were really happy about that. Um, thank you to the city for that and um Jill and Terry, um, I'm still waiting uh for the issue with the New Uwana Congressional Church tree cutting. Um, specifically about the report from D L N R, um, I'm sorry. Um, Kelton is following up um on status of that for me regularly, um, but we still haven't gotten the, that report back. But um they do know that um a request has been made and um, when we do get a copy, um, we'll uh share what we can. And then, yes, for um oh, the issue with the pedestrian walkway going from Awailimo um down to Paola Elementary School. Um, we were able to set a date. Um, I think everybody's on uh company Megan and Mike, um, I believe. Sorry, I, I, the, the official date's slipping my mind. If anybody else would like to join the site visit with D O T, we're going to see if there's going to be um any chance of using Safe Route to Schools money to kind of take care of that issue with the kids having to um cross the canal now that the little bridge is no longer there. Um, oh, actually, it's going to be on June eighteenth at eleven A M. And we're gonna, it's gonna go to the site so that we can brief them on what's going on and they can take a look and do some uh follow up on that. Um, if anyone else would like to join, um, just contact my office. We can make sure we um keep an eye out for you. Um, yes, Chair, since you brought up S B thirty two oh two, I know I've been sharing updates on that, so just had a quick update. Yes, um, the bill did pass the legislature. Um, me and a bunch of the legislators kind of through the urban core still have a, um, a number of concerns about how this is going to be implemented, but um the bill that passed, you know, had two options. One was the option that we've all been familiar about where the counties are going to have to adopt ordinances for two A D Us in addition to a principal dwelling unit on a parcel. In conference committee, there was language added in that I believe was supposed to try and maybe address some of the Oahu concerns. Um, I am a little unsure if it actually does. I think it complicates things a little too much personally. Um, and the second option is that the counties can adopt special districts. Um, it's a little unclear to me how they're going to do that. I guess a lot of it will be worked out in the actual ordinance, which I would be interested in. Um, seeing um the, the districts are supposed to be throughout the entire county, um, but there is also language about focusing on the urban core, uh, based on the urban core plan, um, specifically within walking distance, which was described to me as a fifteen minute walk from rail transit stations, but also federal freeways and highways. So I was a little concerned about that, given the vicinity of Polly Highway through the middle of the district. Um, uh, if they do do these special districts, the plan for that needs to include eleven thousand parcels that can do a dwelling unit and up to, and at least two A D Us across the island. Um, for Oahu specifically, there is an additional eleven thousand units of mixed use units that also needs to be included if they go that route. Um, the counties would have until the end of twenty twenty six to adopt their ordinances. Otherwise, there is a trigger in there where, you know, if the only thing wrong with the permit was requesting an A D U, the counties would have to let it go through automatically. Um, if they don't adopt the ordinances. Um, that's just kind of a high level um of what happened uh with thirty two oh two in conference. I'm happy to answer any further questions if somebody has something specific. Um, and just my last update is we got information from the um state library system. Um, I think you guys know I'm a big proponent of it, given my background. So they are starting their summer reading challenge um from June first. Uh, I don't know if I'm going to have time to participate this year, but it's a great program. Um, they can earn rewards nationwide that they compete for. If you use an online app to log your reading and you know, as you read certain amount of pages, they, they enter you into like a drawing for some prizes. Um, it's a really fun program. Um, and starts June first. I'll put a link to that program in the chat if anybody's interested. And happy to take any questions or follow up. Oh, uh, sorry. What I was saying, Audrey, sorry, I saw that you also emailed me about the um speed signs on Polly Highway. I did forward that to our, our office forwarded that to D O T also, but if governor's rep could also follow up, hopefully we can get an answer a little quicker. But uh, that's all updates I have. Um, if there's any questions or anything else, I can take that. Happy to do so.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the representative from the board? Are there any questions from the community? I don't see any, so please speak up if if I miss you. Hearing none. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Representative. We appreciate you coming out and and giving your report this evening.
Good to see everybody.
Thank you. So that concludes our, do we have any other elected uh officials online that we haven't heard from? Hearing none, we're ready to move on to board business and as a reminder, when um we do have business, it is prudent for our uh members to turn on their video if possible. If not possible, then so be it. Thank you. Uh, first on the agenda is a recognition of a distinguished community member. We touched on this earlier. But uh Sylvia, can you lead this off?
Well, the award actually is for Dale Arakaki, who is the Paola Elementary School Principal. And um Dale has been one of our greatest supporters for the neighborhood board because for many years, he's allowed us to use Paola Elementary Cafeteria as our meeting place. And um, you know, he gave us first preference on it and we've stayed there for, gee, I don't know, I'm, I know it's more than ten years. It's gotta be more like twenty something years that we have been at Paola Elementary School. But um, and with the changes um with the D O E, he unfortunately was not able to continue doing um what he did for our neighborhood board because he basically never charged us. We were having no rent at Paola Elementary School for all those years. And so I think that as a board, we should um do a recognition certificate from him from our neighborhood board.
Can I take that as a form of
Deliver it.
I'm sorry, can I take that as a form of a motion that you move to uh that the board?
That we send him a recognition, um, and we can do, um, some members of our board could, you know, take the time to deliver it to the school.
Thank you. Do I hear it?
Fast because school's gonna end. Second.
Adrian's second. Thank you, Adrian. Okay, so as, as Sylvia mentioned, we do uh the boards are, uh, do have the ability to um produce a certificate of recognition. And so that's what we're talking about, and I can have that printed. Um, our neighborhood assistants already provided that to me. And what the proposal would be is to maybe set some time that whoever of the board has, has an opportunity, we could go over and present it. I would assume a lot of people would be busy, but hopefully we can get, you know, at least a few people from the board to present it to uh the principal. Yeah, are there, is there any other discussion? Does does anyone want to speak in opposition to this? Does anyone else want to speak at all? Otherwise, we can move to a vote. So all those in favor of uh providing a certificate of recognition to Principal Dale Ericaki, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no.
Aye.
Are there any? Okay, yeah, when, I'm sorry, that I was, was that in? That was in favor, Mason, I believe that was you? Were you voting in favor?
Yes. Favor, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So are there any notes? Are there any abstentions? So I will take that as unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, what I'll do is as this is just a procedural matter, I will uh email out a, some proposed times where we can talk about when we can deliver the certificate. I'll probably have it printed up and and pick it up here the twenty eighth of May, but I'll, I'll talk to our neighborhood assistant. Thank you, everybody. It's, I think, well deserved, and I, I think everybody agrees with that. Next up, we have our application to join the Oahu uh Metro Planning Organization. As um Ray G, our representative discussed earlier, we do have to send a letter with our application over. We were a member at one point. Um, I guess we, we missed too many meetings and so they um threw us off, if you want, if you want to be explicit. And so uh we did have to, when I say we, it's the board, it was essentially Ray G. So it's the royal we. We attended uh so many meetings in a row. I don't know if it was three or four, and so now we can reapply. So what uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Ray G, do you want to add anything or make a motion in that respect?
Um, sure, I would like to make a motion that we joined Oahu M P O because we fulfilled the requirements of attending for consecutive plus. I've been taking an hour off of work during that time to attend the meeting. And you know, if anybody else wants to go to these meetings, that's okay with me. But I just wanted to get us on the membership roster. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sylvia. Uh, is there any discussion? Anybody in opposition? Okay, let's move to a vote then. Uh, all those in favor of applying as a, to be a member for this board, to be a member of the Oahu uh Metro Planning Organization, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. Anybody opposed, say no. Do we have any abstentions? Hearing none, thank you very much. It is approved and we will send that letter out and uh it should all be good. Thank you, Ray G, for your service, though, uh, and we appreciate it. You've done great reports and we appreciate hearing, hearing more, but uh, thank you.
Thank you. And if anybody wants to take my place, feel free to suggest. I don't want to hog the spot.
I think once you're settled in, I could, I could tell you, once you're settled in, it's, it's it's hard to get someone else. So next up on the agenda, we have a permitting issue. And and I left this title at a potential monster home in Pacific Heights because we don't know, and this is essentially the twenty seven sixty one Pacific Heights. Um, do we have anyone from the neighborhood? I know Kathy, you had some questions, but do we have, uh, oh, Dean, I see you there. Do you um is Stanford here also? Is he on the call? Dean, do you want to make any comments of this, or do you want me to, to move into this?
No, I want you, yeah, you go ahead. I can, I can fill in as needed. If you have any questions.
So there are a few uh neighbors. I, I'm a member uh in Pacific Heights and I think Kathy, as Kathy is, and uh, so we're a little bit aware of the issues regarding this home, and let me, let me lay it out a little bit. So if you recall, there was a permit, and the dates may be a little sketchy. It was sometime in two thousand twenty one that an initial permit was made to construct a home at twenty one sixty one, twenty seven sixty one Pacific Heights. Somehow, the plans were seen by certain people in the neighborhood and it was found to be I, I, and these are my words, grossly out of the bounds of what a home should be according to D P P rules. And the, and that was after the permit was approved. As board members may recall, we were, we uh as a board discussed the situation and we passed a resolution requesting that the permit be uh essentially killed or, you know, revoked. I'm sorry, is the better word. I don't, that's what I should have said, revoked. And it indeed was revoked by D P P. So what happened, and that was sometime, I believe, in later two thousand twenty one. And there was an appeal by the owner. And for that appeal, and we heard a little, we've heard in the last uh few meetings about the, you know, a little bit about the board of uh so, uh, the Board of Appeals for Permitting. And it was on their agenda, someone in our neighborhood, an attorney in our neighborhood was going to be involved in that appeal process. We received and and up to the hearing date, we received notice that the appeal was withdrawn. And that was the last we had heard about it. And as I recall, like I said, that was in two thousand twenty one. So recently, there was some construction activity in, on that line.
Right now. Yep.
It's going on right now, and there, they have, the owners of the property have posted the permit, and the permit is basically the same permit with, I believe it has an A at the end. So it is the same permit.
It's the same permit number.
So based upon what we've, what those of us in the neighborhood have seen, uh, D P P is supposed to, um, if there is no construction within a year's time, the permit is canceled. But for some reason, the owner must have, you know, altered the plans, went back to D P P. And the D P P has allowed that permit to be reinstated. And so in the appeals process, there was a ruling that the owner's appeal was sustained. But there is no seemingly, or at least the, the best that I could find, there's seemingly no public record of a hearing or a finding of fact from the appeals board. So we're really concerned. And as mentioned in our discussion, and this was quite a while back, there was a, another house up the road. And I can't remember what that number is, but kind of clearly had some serious uh code violations, especially when it came to offset, offsets. So there is a real lack of confidence that D P P will adhere to the, to the rules for building. And so we as a community are very concerned about the status. And uh, Dean, did you want to add anything else?
Okay, uh, uh, Okay, uh, uh, the, the revocation came, uh, came about, uh, through a letter from then DPP Director Dino Cheetah in, uh, January, uh, 2022. Uh, and it was a letter to the owner of 2761 Pacific Heights Road. And it stated that the permit was revoked, which means that the permit number now, the, the, the approved permit number is canceled. Uh, and the letter stated clearly that the only way to reinstate the permit, that permit number would be through the appeals process. But as Patrick said, uh, the, the owners withdrew or did not, uh, uh, you know, they withdrew from the, the appeals process. So that permit number should have been null and void at that point. Uh, and you know, it sat there for more than two years. Uh, and as, as we all know and Patrick mentioned, if a permit shows no progress within a year, it should be null and void also. Uh, but somehow it was, it was maintained and it was revised and signed by the Deputy Director, um, Jiro Sumata, uh, in March of 2024 this year to, uh, he, he signed the, actually, uh, stated, uh, he signed, uh, what, uh, council members investigation, um, report stating that, uh, it was correct that the permit is valid. So that just baffled us because the permit number one should have been revoked and number should, the number should have been canceled. Uh, it la, it should have lapsed after a year also, uh, and, and they didn't go through the appeals process. Uh, and the permit is still valid. We don't get that. Uh, furthermore, during the, uh, revocation process, but just prior to revocation, um, the neigh, uh, our neighborhood contacted Shipti, the State Historic Preservation Office and got a letter. Um, then Director Alan Downer of, uh, Shipti sent a, an official letter to the Director of, of DPP, Director Cheetah stating that it was his opinion that DPP should have routed the, the permit application, the original permit application to Shipti for Shipti's review because 2761 is adjacent to a historic property and across the street from another historic property. So it, it, it was his opinion that it should, that should have happened. But DPP ignored that. And, uh, and also, uh, in the, in the resolution, there, there, there was a list in the neighborhood board's, uh, resolution, there's a whole list of stipulations that were requested and they were ignored by the DPP. I'll stop now.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dean. Uh, so what I would request, what our neighborhood is requesting is that this board authorize or direct that a letter be sent to Department of Planning and Permanent, copy to, uh, Tyler's office and the mayor's office, um, requesting that they review this and, uh, and that they make sure they, uh, essentially they make sure they get it right. It has to be worded that way, but, um, make sure that they get it right and remind them of the resolution that this board passed. And that's what I, that's what, uh, that's what I would request. So Sylvia, do you have?
Patrick, can I add one more? Okay, is, is, uh, is Lisa an, uh, council member there, um, still in the meeting here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, okay, Lisa, thank you for the investigation. Uh, you know, uh, uh, the former Deputy Director Sumata signed that, uh, right, the, uh, the, uh, your, the investigation stating that, uh, DPP acted accordingly and was correct and just, uh, but I don't know if you know this, but Sumata resigned two weeks after he, uh, signed that. You know that, right?
Yes, I think he resigned, uh, last, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and all of this action, uh, to my knowledge is happening, uh, at the DPP's branch in Capelay. Is that, is that, uh, you know, I requested the mayor, to the mayor that, that ever being, you know, that, uh, branch be investigated. You know if that's happened?
Okay, um, well, let, let's not actually get into that on, on this forum. I, I, I don't, yeah, we're, we're kind of going in. I'm, I'm not sure that's a, a, an appropriate discussion to have at this meeting, but I, I see where you're going. But, uh, but Tyler, I, I would, our, our council member, I would say that, you know, uh, our community is very sensitive about this, you know, given what's, what's occurred before. And for a Director Ashiro, the mayor, as I recalled, the mayor actually brought this particular permit up to show his action on monster homes. So we, we, we want this done right. Obviously, the property owner has a right to build a home. That's not in question, but the property owner does not have a right and DPP shouldn't allow the property owner to build a home outside of the rules. And that's basically what I would say.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
All of the information and like the chronological order from your side, can you email that to me?
Yes, we can, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I know we're hitting you. Oh, I, I'm sorry, was that Lisa or?
Yes, that's Lisa. Lisa.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. I thought that was Director Ashiro. Yes, I can copy you both, uh, both, well, everyone, Tyler and Lisa and, uh, Kim on that email and we can give you the, the, the details. Yeah, go ahead, Todd.
I, I, I have a question. So I hear, I hear sort of two issues. One is the building board of appeals process seems fairly opaque to everyone and DPP's sort of internal processes seem fairly opaque. But let me ask this, and, and this is going to be kind of a direct question because I think it gets to the heart of what we're discussing. Is, is the accusation that right now what's being built is not in accordance with our monster home ordinance, which restricts um, FAR at a point seven or less and between point six and point seven restricts the number of, you know, bedrooms and, and bathrooms and, and parking and things like that. Is, is, is that what's being alleged right now? Because I think we can go back and find sort of all the documentation and the transcripts from the building board of appeals because they do have a, a typist that transcribes everything. But moving forward, and, and I hear that, you know, construction is underway right now, is the allegation that what's being built is not according to the, the plans that were submitted recently, which seem to be in accordance with this law. I, I just want to be clear on that.
At this point, I don't think.
Uh, I, I, I'm just going to say that, okay, there's two things going on here. Okay, the, the biggest issue to me is that the revocation meant nothing to the DPP. Okay, they, they weren't even in compliance with their own mandate. That's number one. Uh, and, and also the lapsing of the permit should also happen because of the time that lapsed with no progress on site. I live right next door, so I, I see what happened and not happened. Okay, that's number one. And number two, as you mentioned, the opacity of the process is, uh, is, it, it's unacceptable. You know, we have the sensitive issue in our neighborhood and a permit is revised even when it should have been revoked and it should have lapsed because of the lack of progress. And we don't even know what the plans are, what they've been revised to. There's, and, and, you know, DPP should, should have been aware that this neighborhood board was on it, right, on the case with the resolution and none of the stipulations that the neighborhood board listed in that resolution have been addressed.
Okay, well, if, if I could propose, uh, that, like I said, what, what we would like from this board is just to reiterate the elements that are in our resol, that we passed in our resolution and basically that's it. We, we can talk in detail with the council member and Kim, I can send you, uh, some, the details also. If, if you would pass that on to the mayor, I would appreciate it. Thank you, uh. Okay, so let, let, let me turn this over to, uh, some of our members to, to get their input. Sylvia, would you like to say something?
Oh, yes. I wanted to know if you want me to make a motion?
Yes, that would be terrific. A motion to just reiterate our, our resolution and, uh, are the neighborhood, the community's concern for the status and just to follow their, their rules.
And we should even add, an investigation should be done to see how this is being overlooked.
Okay. Do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Is, uh, thank you, Kathy. Is there any, uh, discussion, any more discussion? Okay, uh, we can move to a vote. Are those in favor of sending a letter that would go to DPP, uh, copying the mayor and, um, the mayor, council, the council member and, um, the, I can't, Mike Formby, uh, Formby's, uh, position, the executive director for the city, I believe, are usually.
I would, why, why don't you add the State Historic Preservation Office, also DLNR?
That, okay, that, that would be appropriate too. So all those in favor of such an action, please say aye.
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 Are there, all those opposed, say no? Are there any abstentions? Okay, thank you. So Dean, um, we're going to follow up with this and I, I would like to get together with you and uh, Stanford and the other, and any other interested parties in the neighborhood and maybe we can provide a little fa, uh, more factual basis to both, uh, Director Ashiro and, uh, the, our council member, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Is that okay, Tyler?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Dean, go ahead, please. Do you have any other comments?
Uh, we should keep, uh, Ca- Kathy, Kathy Greavy, uh, also was in our neighborhood.
Yeah, and we will, okay, Kathy, we'll do that too. Okay, uh, Director, did you want to have anything to add or is that all right? Okay, thank you, thank. Thank you. Thank you, Council Member, for sticking around for that. We appreciate it. And, you know, we're, we're just kind of frustrated and that is the, it's the opaqueness of the situation more than anything and we just don't have confidence. And I know DPP is trying to improve and they have a lot on their agenda, but this is really important and you want to catch it when it's at the beginning. So thank you very much. Sorry, I didn't mean to editorialize.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to move on to traffic safety issues around the Poly. I think Paula asked me to, to put that on the agenda. I don't know if, if Paula was able to, uh, resolve her tech problems. Paula, any chance? Did anyone wish to, uh, oh, pine on this issue? I think this, you know, well, I can just tell you a little bit, it's just a continuing concern about, you know, as the aging community, aging community gets older, there are just a lot of pitfalls crossing Poly Highway and so there's just always a concern, make, trying to make it safer. So that's basically what that's about. Hopefully next month, if, if we need to pursue this further, Paula will be able to join us. Uh, Director, did you have a, uh, Director Ashiro, did you want to add something?
Yes, so, so thanks and yes, Paula has always, um, been very vocal at, at our meetings uh, regarding her concerns and I know the community as a whole on, about traffic safety on Poly. I did reach out to, um, Director Sniffen and ask about representation at the New Wano Board. So if you're willing and, um, I'm sure you will be to have a representative from his office, either himself, the Highways Deputy, or, um, I think there's, there was a division chief um, who has attended before. Are you familiar with someone from DOT coming to the meeting?
In the past, and this was pre-COVID, we had, um, George, and I can't remember his last name, I believe it was George. Mike Maderos would contact, you know, uh, contact me a number of times too. But, uh, so he might be our point of contact. I believe he's the East Oahu, uh, manager, I, I, or engineer, so those are the names that, that, that may be responsible. I don't have George's last name, I'm sorry.
Okay, I can find out, but so is the board open to including, um, someone from DOT at the next meeting?
That would be fantastic. I think if they'd be willing to come, we can be prepared and discuss a number of issues ranging from, uh, speed limits to all sorts of things, pedestrian crossings and that sort of thing. So yes, if you could arrange that, that'd be fantastic. We would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, I, I'll follow up with Ed Sniffen and ask for, um, someone to attend, um, next meeting.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anything further on this issue? Hearing none, uh, thank you very much.
Patrick.
Sylvia, go ahead.
Okay, my, wouldn't it be improper to invite the, um, director and his deputies and some of our officials to walk the Poly Highway and cross the Poly Highway like Pat and the New Wano residents did. They could do what, um, Kim Hashiro did. Came up and walked across and she knows how dangerous it is and maybe that's what we should do. We should send them an invitation and invite them to walk.
Well, I would suggest that's a great idea. Let's, you know, win their, uh, uh, representatives show up next month. I mean, I would suggest, you know, let, let's tell them exactly, be prepared to tell them exactly what our expectations are, what our concerns are, that sort of thing. And I would think, uh, if we were prepared to do that next month, that might be a better time to make that request, but that's a very, very appropriate request. I think that would be great. So hold that thought. Thank you.
I agree with that and also prior to next meeting, is there a way that that, that a list or a prioritized list could be put together of certain areas that are of concern? That might also help.
Okay. I will, uh, ask, I'll ask Paula to, to look at that because since she knows people in the neighborhood, so that's a very big concern. So I'm sure she has that. So I was going to follow up with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ray G.
And the last word is, could we also invite the governor's rep to the, to participate as well? And that way the governor can make sure that the DOT director attends with his staff since he's been so reluctant to come out or too busy to come out in the past.
Okay. I will, uh, I'll make that request. Thank you. So anything further on this? So next month, we will revisit. Thank you very much, Director, for your, um, your offer. So with nothing further, we can move on, correct? Moving on, uh, there's a proposal, draft a resolution. This was, uh, kind of came up at the last moment. So this wasn't really intended to be on the agenda this way. But that was, i- it came up, like I said, at the, actually the very last moment that the agenda had to go out. And Robert Cetera, I think, is the, the person from the community that, uh, requested this and he did not, uh, provide any details about this. So, and I don't see that Robert has attended, is in attendance this evening. So I don't know if anybody wishes to speak on this subject. I know he, uh, Robert mentioned something, you know, had discussed it a, a little bit, a few months ago. I believe it was November or December of last year, but I haven't heard anything since. Does anyone wish to make any comments on this? Hearing none, I, I'll follow Robert and, and, you know, basically tell him, he's, he's got to come and, and provide some details, uh, for this. Yes, please, go ahead, Phil.
Um, just, I'm not sure if you are aware, but Robert did move out of the, out of the neighborhood. He's living in, by Chinatown now.
You know, actually, I went to the Chinatown meeting and he had mentioned that he moved there. And that's why I was a little surprised to, uh, he sent in testimony to the office regarding, regarding this, but we, we had no such resolution, so it was, it was a little, um, it was a little strange, but, uh, yes, I am, I, I did hear that he moved, but I, I, I don't know. I'll still follow up with him and see if this is still a concern. If he wants to pursue it and request that the board do something. But other than that, I really don't know, so. Yeah, I, I, so I don't know. If anyone else wants to bring it up as community concern, so be it, but we'll see. Without anything further, we'll move on. Next up, this was a request from member Paula to put on about capital improvement funds for the community. Without her input, I'm a little perplexed how to move forward on this particular issue. And I assume Paula is unable to participate at this time. So I will put this on net next month's agenda unless someone wants to make a comment or pursue this. Because I'm not really sure how to move forward on this. Okay, hearing none, we can move on to our last point of business. And that is approval of the Tuesday, April sixteen, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes. Are there any proposed amendments? Hearing none, the the minutes will be adopted as submitted or distributed. Sylvia?
Oh, I just had a ask a question. It's on page. Oh, gosh, where was I marked it? It's about the water water supply. When it just says under the water water supply that questions were concerns were asked, but it doesn't say what our concerns were. So you know, it's kind of hard to remember what was discussed. So when the representative comes back, we don't know if he followed up on what our questions were from the last meeting.
Well, if you want to make a a some uh proposed amendments, if you remember the questions, you're welcome to submit something.
The first page, responses to questions from the previous meeting, that doesn't tell us anything.
I I will, I will comment that as you know, Sylvia, there 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 have been many concerns from a number of neighborhood boards regarding our the adopted policy of the Neighborhood Commission Office to abbreviate the minutes and just put time markers as opposed to being really descriptive. And that was basically.
I'm not saying that it gotta be really descriptive, but you know, Audrey and the Nuono people keep asking these questions about issues on water water supply for their for their area. And just like we asked about that one resident came and asked about the fire hydrant. I I'm only saying that, you know, couple of sentences would just, not a full description, but the construction work on Alika and the fire hydrant on Toa. And that would suffice that we know a question was asked about those issues and that we never got a reply.
Well, I I agree with you. I I wish we could maybe move back to the to the good old days where we had more detailed minutes where it it was expanded upon. But unfortunately, I think the reality is is that what I can express what the Neighborhood Commission Office has passed to me and others, and they said, basically, if our board feels strongly, certain things should be put in the minutes, then we're free to add those on our own. I can, the neighborhood assistant is sitting right here. So, you know, I I I can ask her just in general in the future, you know, maybe.
I don't know. But if everybody else is happy with the way it is, then, you know,
I don't, I don't think.
But for me, I need to know what was asked in the minutes the month before. And if I got my answer.
Yeah, and 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 well, the neighborhood assistant just mentioned to me that, and I think this is generally the the what's been told to me by the Neighborhood Commission Office is that that's why we have timestamps for the video. And I'm not, you know, Sylvia, I hear you. I mean, I I think a lot of people from a lot of boards, I mean, that's the number one complaint I've heard is that our minutes have become less substantial, so to speak. But that's just the na, I mean, that's kind of the nature of what we're we're operating under.
The the thing that upsets me is that we all sit on this board. And, you know, if a person in the community reads these minutes, doesn't sound like we did anything on the board, you know? We don't address things that might be important. So anyway, that's my take on it.
But, okay. Like I said, I fully agree with you, but if if someone wants to volunteer to to maybe add to the minutes, I'd be happy. Ray G, did you want to add something?
No, I don't. Well, I just want to make the same comment that Sylvia made because I ran, you know, I was the executive director at one time for this office. And I feel like this administration in relation to our miss, they just want to streamline everything and have everybody, everybody just refer back to the video, which is their prerogative, I guess. But I agree with Sylvia. The community wants to know, and if they take the time to read the minutes, they want to see a summary, maybe just a little bite of what we discussed. And if it piques their curiosity, then they can go back and look at the video. But the way that they're doing things in the office relating to the minutes is very disappointing. And just the fact that they're hiring more people, you know, and doing less work, to me, that's my opinion, not the board's opinion. And I want to stand and have that written for the record. Because Sylvia, I agree. Chair, I agree. The quality has gone down, you know, and how you can't just refer everybody to the video if, you know, people may not have access or don't have the time. They take the time to look at the minutes and they want to see at least a summary or a bite of what we discussed. But thank you for the opportunity to come.
Certainly. And I I will let everybody know. I actually am chairing the committee to revise the neighborhood plan. And we've actually, you know, we've gone through some organizational stuff, you know, things that we had to do. And so we haven't really gotten into the substance. And I know the minutes are going to come up. So that 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 issue is definitely definitely a big issue among a lot of boards that that they're very concerned, if not, I'll say unhappy about the direction of of how the minute taking has gone. So it will it will be addressed. Now, I I can't say it'll change, but at least it will be addressed. So, thank you. Thank you. I can bring it up too. But, okay, thank you. But I, you know, I I will let I'll let the Neighborhood Commission know. And and I, like I said, I think, you know, they've heard this before, but I'll let them know that it's it's a continuing concern among our boards. And and I don't, I don't, like I said, it's not just our boards. I've had, when this first issue, this policy first came about of of sort of max, you know, they maximize the amount of pages that they would produce. It it was, there was a lot of chatter among the leaders of the boards that were very, very concerned and disappointed. So but it is what it is. So I will go back to it. Are there any amendments? Anybody proposes any amendments to the April meeting minutes? Hearing none, then I will, we'll mark them as adopted, as distributed. Thank you. Sorry. And does anybody have any other business? Hearing none on the agenda, we can move to our announcements. I would remind everybody, as Director Ashiro mentioned, there are still some mayor's meetings. I unfortunately didn't make make the ones in this community, but they're probably an excellent opportunity to go and talk to the mayor. Neighborhood Security Watch, as I think Adrian mentioned, will be June tenth at six thirty to eight thirty. I forgot where, but you can you can talk to Paula about that. Are there any other? And and we do have a regular meeting coming up, June eighteenth of next month on Tuesday, as always. Are there any other announcements? As I would always say, if if any of the board would like to put an item on the agenda, I typically have never refused that. So please let me know. If any member of the community would like to put something on the agenda, please just email me. And, you know, I'll be happy to consider it and we can go from there. I I've actually have declined once and but that was a special situation. So thank you, everybody. I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. And have a great evening, a great month, and I look forward to seeing everybody next month. Thank you.
Okay. All right, good night.